Welcome, everybody, to the Scioto Township Board of Trustees. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:01 PM. My name is Jessica Flintoff. I'm the clerk. In the absence of the supervisor, I'll be moderating until such time that the board makes a motion to appoint another moderator. First call to order, Carrie, absent, Yapo.
Present.
Flintoff, present. Brandt.
Here.
Noel.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Ryser.
Here.
We have forum also present, Office Coordinator Christie Aiken and Township Attorney Mariah Fink. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you, you have a proposed agenda. I would, I know we have several. I would like to go down the row, starting with Christie, with any proposed changes to the agenda.
Okay, one addition I have to the agenda is a food waste pilot outreach program that we can put at the top of new business. And also to remove from the consent agenda is K-15, request by the applicant.
So we'll remove K-15 and add to the top of new business above N3, above N1. We're going to label it N3 Food Waste Pilot Outreach Program. Kathleen, do you have anything?
I'd like to take K-11 off consent, please.
Okay, K-11, let's put at the top of new business above N3. I have a couple of changes. I would like to add a resolution and recognition of Rebecca Motti's service. I would like to put that after N1. Also, I would like to add an item, Authorization of Funds for the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office. And we, I'm just trying to be mindful of which items require staff. So that one I'd like to put after the resolution for Rebecca.
Do you want to attach letters to them, numbers?
Yes, let's do that. So, and then one other item I'd like to pull off consent is K1 Payment of the Bills. There's a last minute amendment to that. And we can put that at the end of new business if that's okay with everyone. So right now, the working under, under, order under new business would be K-11, Permission to Apply for SEMCOG End of Life Sidewalks and Trails One-Time Grant Opportunity, followed by N3 Food Waste Pilot Outreach Program, followed by N1, as presented, the Amendment to Agreement for Services for LASSA, followed by N4, a Resolution and Recognition of Rebecca Motti's Service, followed by N5, Authorization of Funds for the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office under the current contract, followed by N2, Consideration of the Purchase of Land or Lease of Real Property, followed by K1 Payment of the Bills. Are there any other changes?
There is one going.
To the end.
Okay, thank you.
Just for clarification, we are moving, not moving, not moving, but removing K-15.
Yes.
And also proposed for removal from the agenda is K-15 at the request of the applicant. Any other proposed changes? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt as amended? Moved by Ryser, support by Reed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, agenda adopted as amended. Enclosed are the correspondence, F1, are there any comments?
I do have a comment. There's comments in here from Renee Smallwood about FOIA requests. I'm curious about the volume of requests that's coming and the volume of pages that it entails. Do you know?
We have about 80 to 120 FOIA requests a year. In terms of the precise pages, I could come back to.
I mean, from that person.
From that individual, it's 30 to 40 FOIA requests. And we, we regularly fulfill FOIA requests from her. There are some that take longer than others, but.
Has she charged any fees for that?
Currently, to date, no. Our current policy is that if an individual FOIA request is estimated to take more than $50 worth of time, we don't charge so many of them, our digital records. But that is definitely something I'm looking at and may bring a proposal back to the board for.
Yes, I was concerned about the amount of effort to fulfill though.
Yeah.
Have you expended any legal consultation time on fulfilling the FOIA requests?
Yeah, Mariah and Jim are great at helping, also other staff time, of course. You know, depending on the nature of the request, Chief Hood, Teri Suave, our assessor, others as needed.
Just thinking, if we have to pay for attorney time, that that might go into the factoring of what you're going to look at here.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, moving on to special topics, we have the introduction of Nikki Timmons for the Consideration of Finance Director. I want to welcome Aurora Northrup, our Human Resources Manager, to the table. As well, I believe the candidate is online, as well as the recruiter, Elizabeth from SRA.
Good evening, Aurora Northrup, HR Manager. So I just wanted to give a brief overview. So of course, the Board of Trustees approved an executive search firm, Sanford Rose Associates, to assist with filling the Finance Director position for the township. The first interview was conducted by Elizabeth Diaz. Scioto Township then interviewed these four candidates and two moved forward. The remaining two candidates were interviewed separately by the Finance and Treasury Teams, with HR, of course. Another interview was scheduled with HR, the clerk, the treasurer, and the supervisor. One of the officers declined to interview, the rest did interview with the candidate Nikki Timmons. And then a meet and greet was conducted on October 23rd, providing the employees, residents, and board members a chance to interact with the candidates separately and, but informally with the two remaining candidates. So I'd like to just introduce Elizabeth Diaz from Sanford Rose Associates. If she, if you have any questions for her, she should be online. And then after that, I'll introduce Nikki Timmons.
Thank you.
There, promoted both to the panel, to try. Elizabeth?
Now I'm able to talk. Hi, everyone, thank you so much. Just want to say I appreciate the opportunity to work with the Township of Scioto. It has been a pleasure working with Aurora and Jessica on this process. And I think you have a fantastic candidate in Nikki Timmons. So I look forward to hearing how everything goes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Nikki is a candidate, so, okay, great. So before Nikki comes on, on line, I just wanted to indicate that she is a finance leader with over 20 years of experience in municipal finance, utilities, and public accounting. She has served as the Deputy CFO and Treasurer, leading ERP implementations, stabilizing financial operations, reducing fraud by 56%, and improving controls. So Nikki will be an immediate asset to the township to improve, improve and build its financial operations. Nikki?
Hi, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Aurora, for that warm introduction. I appreciate that. And if anyone has any questions, I want to make sure I come on camera so you get to meet me. I, it was a pleasure working with Aurora, as well as Sandra Rose in the hiring process, as well as Jessica. I'm looking forward to what we can do together as a team. I enjoyed myself meeting the board members that were present in our informal candid discussion last week. And so I want to thank you all for this opportunity. I know this is the first time that the township has actually had a Finance Director. And so I appreciate this opportunity that you guys are giving me to be the first to lead the charge. And I know that we'll do well together as a team. Thank you.
Any comments from board members?
You said welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Nikki, thank you very much for, for coming in and meeting with us, you know, on several occasions. It was wonderful getting to work with you through this process. I know you're going to be a really great asset to the team. And we went through a robust process. I know Jessica and Aurora and Elizabeth spent more, a lot of time on it. I spent some time on it, getting involved a little bit later on. But it was wonderful getting to work with you through that process. I look forward to working with you here when you start in a few weeks.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome, I look forward to working with you. See you soon.
Exactly, see you soon, see.
Kathleen?
Hi, Nikki, it's good to see you again. Can't wait to see you in person. Welcome to Scioto Township.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Welcome, Nikki.
Thank you, David.
All right, well, thank you so much, Nikki, for being here. We're all looking forward to working with you. So we're going to be formally considering the conditional offer of employment under consent. So thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work, Aurora.
Thank you.
And thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's a pleasure working with everyone.
Yes.
Next up, we have public comment. This is the time for members to speak to the Board of Trustees for up to five minutes on any matter. Those who are here present, please come forward.
Jan Colbertson, and I'm here as a member of the Environmental Sustainability Test Force. And I just want to let people know that we are kicking off the Food Waste Composting Pilot. And our orientation starts tomorrow, 7 o'clock. You can join us online or in person. And we'll be recording it so people can join. We are asking people to sign up online, and we have 70 people signed up. Awesome. To kick things off, so we're really pleased about that. And thank you, Christie, for preparing the additional agenda item. We found a great education and outreach partner in ZeroWaste.org. And they're actually, they've actually volunteered to help us with the orientation tomorrow. So Samuel will be online. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Jan.
Thank you, Jan.
Hi, Rob.
Rob Patterson, Scioto Township President. Rebecca Motti ending her service to Scioto residents is a tragic loss. She's been here for 12 years, but over the last five years, Rebecca has constantly made sure that Township Presidents' needs were met, while there was significant dysfunction on board. Thank you, Rebecca, for all you have done for us. You should be celebrated. Congratulations, Nikki, on the offer the board has made. You have got a lot to get up your speed on in Scioto Finance. And I'm sure that your years of experience will help smooth the transition. One thing you're going to have to be aware of and prepared for is that you're going to have to be immune to manipulation. There is still a lot of dysfunction on this board, and there are factions that are trying to consolidate power. And I'm sure you will be in the middle of that sooner rather than later. So be prepared. Nikki, you will hear that I'm misinforming and spreading misinformation. But know that over the last five years, many on this board, the public comments, I and many others, brought to meetings criticizing Hathaway were the best thing ever. And that was the basis for some very strong friendships developed over those years, friendships that are now under severe strain due to the change in behavior of some on this board. Kathleen, at Thursday's special meeting, you said you were tired of the criticism. Two weeks ago, you called my public comments rhetoric. You also quoted that while some people may disagree, they're not allowed to have their own facts. Rest assured that the facts of my public comments are based on your orders, your behavior, and your actions. Just two weeks ago, you said I'm spreading misinformation. I asked two questions about the resolution about having a deputy attend every board meeting. You put the agenda, you put the item in your consent agenda, so there was zero discussion at the time. I wish one of you would ask for the, I could just be removed from the consent agenda so that it could be discussed. Just in the agenda packet, there was zero documentation about how this impacts the police coverage of Scioto Township. Can we please have a report from somebody? If not from this board, can we please have a report from Lieutenant Carsonburg? As far as I know, Scioto Township only has one deputy at night, sometimes two during the day. Is the deputy attending the board meetings the one and only deputy assigned to Scioto that night? If not, is there another deputy assigned to Scioto Township there with their duties at night? If this assignment is special, are we to be charged extra for the deputy's presence? So these are the questions. Please provide a report that answers them, since there was nothing in the consent agenda passed. Also, when you provide no information for an agenda item, you can't say I'm spreading misinformation when I asked about it. Please put more detail in future agenda item. Also, you said I was ranking the importance of coverage. Isn't that the exact thing you were doing when you removed the sheriff's coverage from 17,000 residents to make attendance at a board meeting a priority? Again, you provided zero information, so these are the kinds of questions that result. And then tonight, you have a resolution adding to how much we pay the sheriff. I don't know what that is, because that was added at the last moment. So clearly, when you said two weeks ago that there was zero financial impact on that township, now we're finding out that there is a legal charge for that deputy. I'll be interested in what that conversation is. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Anybody else present wish to speak? Please come forward.
Alan Ivana, Low Density Parkwood. Two weeks from today, November 11th, will mark four years our group has been on the Arbor's Grove project. We generated a recent Parkwood communique, asking our people to come out tonight to thank trustees, including Ms. Fink, for all their hard work on our behalf. Low Density Parkwood is collectively proud of their own diligence and that their longtime hard work has paid off. We did last on tonight's agenda into purchase of land, lease of property on the agenda. So we're hopeful we can hang in and hear the specifics and maybe ask some questions. One of our group, Bob Izy, who has spoken on many occasions, could not attend tonight. However, I promise to share his sentiment. He speaks to the whole of our dedicated Low Density group. I have the utmost regard and gratitude for the Scioto Board of Trustees for their willingness to listen to and act upon our concerns over the course of this multi-year struggle. This evening, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Alan. Anyone else interested in speaking? Please come forward.
Hi, I am Bill Doney from 465 Wood Grove. I'm part of the Parkwood group. And as we come to the eve of possible decision here about the closing of the project of Aubrey Grove and starting a new life, I want to thank you for listening to us for the last four years. We have tried to be very to the point, have the, have the facts at our fingertips, and work for low density and fitting into the master plan, which you've all embraced in the final decisions for this project. I do have a couple of questions, and they will be obvious. What is the, what is your plan for this property if it is to be purchased? And will you revisit the zoning of this area, since it's less than five acres, which is conflicting with the MR2 zoning? So that might want to be addressed someday. So I hope this land will become part of the Scioto Preserve. And if it does, please call on us for help. We could volunteer to, whether it's cleanup, maintenance, whatever, we'd be glad to do it since we're in such close proximity. And again, thank you for listening to us. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Anyone else present interested in speaking? Christie, is there anyone on Zoom?
Do not see anyone hand raised for public comment.
Is there that hand raised that I can see for?
Well, it's Murphy, so.
Oh, it's Murphy's hand, I can't.
I tried to confirm.
It's not right here.
We see you, Murphy.
Yeah.
All right. Great, any board member response?
If I may? I want to remind folks that public comment is for general comment to the board in general. And I would ask that if anyone has specific issues or questions or things you want to talk about specifically with one board member to perhaps set up a meeting, have a one-on-one meeting with that person. Public comments are just for general sharing of information between residents and the board. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Ryan?
Thank you. I would agree with David's statement. Thank you for making that. Fiscal impact for the sheriff's item for tonight is using already budgeted and authorized funds, so there's no additional cost above and beyond what's already budgeted and authorized. To Low Density Parkwood folks, we'll have more information for you in the future, but N2 is not your subject property. I, I don't want to burst your bubble, but we'll have more information at a future meeting.
Yeah, of course.
I want to support David's comments also. Public comment is tended to be an opportunity for residents to address the board as a whole. Finger pointing at one individual isn't part of typical public comment. Now, people can say what they want to say, and we all recognize that. But it needs to be addressed to the board as a whole.
That's it.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other comments?
Make one comment. I'm sorely disappointed in the feedback that is less than supportive of safety for our residents and our Board of Trustees. And this board voted unanimously to have a deputy sheriff here. I would ask that you respect that decision. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, moving on to approval of the minutes, J1, Approval of Minutes of the October 14th regular meeting. Are there any corrections or a motion to approve as presented?
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I would support that. One of the KFIs will support that.
Okay, are you really going to make me choose? I'm going to go with Kathy. Okay, motion by Yapo, support by Noel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, minutes adopted as presented. Next up is the Consent Agenda as Amended. It is amended to remove K1, K11, and K-15. Is there a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda as amended?
I'd make motion to adopt the Consent Agenda as amended.
Motion by Yapo, is there support?
Support.
Support by Reed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, Consent Agenda adopted. Congratulations, Nikki, and we will see you on November 10. Next up, we have reports. L1, Presentation of Research Results by the Parks Staff. And I'll turn it over to Murphy Harrington, our Parks Director.
So before we jump into the presentations, I just wanted to give a little bit of background on why the staff's here tonight. At the beginning of their employment, within the first couple of weeks, we sat down and talked about an area of conservation that these individuals were the most passionate about. And we decided to address, take their passions and turn it into work that would work for the Parks Department in the long run. So we have the four staff members here, Nick, Allison, Nick, Allison, Mike, and Noah. And they're going to be doing a presentation on their research and how it directly impacts our long-term management plans and how these will provide a baseline for judging some of our upcoming changes in the environment. So Nick will be going first, and then I'm just going to take a step back and let you go for it.
Hello, everyone, my name is Nicholas Haly. I did my serve, or I did my project on a moth survey for the Van Culler Preserve. Our study goal for this survey was to document the different species of moths that we were finding within the, the site, and to use them as a proxy for overall insect diversity and to judge that against the current state of the park and then to make recommendation management changes moving forward. We chose Van Culler Preserve for this one, in part because it has a slew of different habitat types, including closed mixed wood or closed mixed hardwood forests, open prairies, and then some more wetland areas as well that had some little marshes and invernal pools. The process of doing this survey was pretty simple. It really involves just putting up a tarp over a string in a certain selected spot, and then returning to this tarp regularly with a black light at night and counting the different species or noting what different species you're seeing and counting how many individuals of those different species that you saw. I conducted this survey twice a week, every two weeks, for the better part of the summer. Just a real quick thing about what exactly a moth is. Moths are part of the Levadopterin family. This includes things like skippers and butterflies as well. They're predominantly nocturnal, which is the main thing that's separating them from butterflies that you're seeing more, which we'll probably move on about later. One of the important things with butterflies and moths is that they go through complete metamorphosis. This is to say that their larva stage is a lot different than their adult stage. Obviously, you guys have all seen caterpillars before. Caterpillars are doing very different things when they're caterpillars. They're eating leaves, some of them are even hunting other insects, as opposed to their adult stages, which are usually pollinating flowers. So this is a really important feature compared. a really important feature compared to a lot of other insects, which are kind of locked into one niche for most of their life. Another important thing about moths is that they use host plants, which we'll talk a little bit more about in just a second. I chose moths for this survey specifically as they're one of the most diverse groups of insects out there. So it gives you a broad range of different things to look at and see how they're using the environment differently. They're also really important pollinators. They're mostly doing this activity at night, so it's hard for people to see. They don't get a lot of appreciation for it, but moths are really, really important for that. They're good indicator species as well with this host plant relationship because it gives us good ideas about population dynamics and interactions that are going on in the ecosystem. And moths are also really, really important for population control of different plants during their larva stages. They can defoliate the leaves off trees to a really high extent. And also, they're just really important for other animals in their ecosystem. Certain species of bats within Michigan, 40% of their diet can be made up of exclusively moths. Going on a little more about that host plant relationship that's really important, moths and butterflies use host plants. So this means that they lay their eggs onto a certain species of plant. And then as they hatch, those larvae will either burrow into the plant or they will just continue to eat leaves off of the outside of that plant. Certain species can be really selective in what species they're using. They can maybe use one or two different species. Some species can be really broad and generalist. So understanding what host plant relationship different species have and being able to recognize those species within the environment then give us a bit of an idea about how those host plants as well are doing within the local preserves. So going over some of our results, we got over 120 individuals recorded. It's a little hard to record moth individuals because they'll land on the sheet and then quickly fly off and then another one will land and it's hard to know always if it's the same individual you've seen or a different individual. But for covering those 120 individuals, we got about 22 different species. And some things to note with those 22 different species were a relatively small amount of borer moths and a relatively small amount of silk moths, which we'll talk a little bit more about in a second here. This is just a broad pie chart of some of the different species we saw. I won't get into the whole thing of this, but broadly what we can see, those biggest groups are made up of things called snout moths. Snout moths are grass-boring moths. They're very generalist. And so it's not surprising that they're the largest groups that we're seeing. Again, without going too far into it, the smallest groups of moths that we're seeing tend to be the more specialized moths as well. Going over some of the moths that we got to see, we did see not a living individual, but within the study site, we found the wing of one lunar moth, which is exciting. Lunar moths are one of our largest silk moth species that are around. And they're only around for maybe a week, maybe two weeks during the summer. So they're hard to see. So finding any evidence of them is always exciting. But silk moths, walnut or lunar moths in particular, are using things like walnuts and hickories and sumax as their host plants. Different things within those mixed hardwood areas. And they're only having one generation per year. So what this means is that they can be really susceptible to different environmental changes that happen year to year and things that disrupt their environment can quickly disrupt their populations as well. So seeing evidence of them is good. We would love to see more evidence of them going into the future. The afflicted dagger moth is another interesting one that we only got to see one individual of throughout the entire study season. Afflicted dagger moths are oak tree specialists. So there are, you know, a whole different kind or slew of different oak tree species that are within our parks. But that's the only tree that they will be feeding on as larva. They have two generations a year, so they're a little more buffered to those environmental changes than some other species of moth can. But that oak specialization really keeps them within an area that also is a bit more of concern and allows us to look a bit more at those population dynamics. Then something that everyone will probably be a little more familiar with is the banded woolly bear moth. These guys were really common throughout the whole study period, which isn't surprising. They're super generalist feeders. Bushes, grasses, trees, basically anything they'll feed off of. And they have generally two, sometimes three generations per year. So they can be especially buffered by this environmental change that can happen. Talking a little more about what all this means, we got relatively low species count. 22 species isn't super high. And then within those populations or within those observations, we got relatively low population densities too. So when we saw certain species of moths, they tended to not come in super large numbers. Those snout moths, those small ones are a bit of an exception to that, but you'll see those in really high numbers in cities and on your own lawns and stuff like that. So not very surprising. Things that this kind of mean what we want to do with this is continuing to do the removal of invasive shrubs in trees. These are things that are competing with the food sources that the moths want naturally. So we've already been doing a lot of honeysuckle and buckthorn and autumn olive control. Continuing to work on that kind of stuff will be really important and really helpful. And then in conjunction with that, then planting native shrubs in trees in those spaces as well will do a lot to both combat the presence of those native shrubs. But they'll help bolster the populations of those native insects. Once those have more support to them, you kind of get a bit of a feedback loop where they'll help control the invasive population more. Those will help increase more native plants, et cetera, et cetera. Along with all of this, we also would like to continue to maintain our different habitat areas that are within the preserve. But while we do that, we also want to try and push away from having hard edge habitats where you see a sharp transition, for example, between like the prairie and hardwood forests. Ideally, these areas would be more transitional, where you'd see a slower change into shrubs and then to bigger trees. These transitional habitats support a lot more biodiversity, both in plants and animal life. That's about it. I just had a couple of extra photos of some moths that I took during my survey that I wanted to share because I thought they were nice. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki.
Forgot to mention that if they may ask questions at the end of the presentation, you're welcome.
Hi, guys. I'm Allison. Thanks for being here. You have a path to be. And if you don't, thanks for still being here anyway. So I'm going to show our research. I studied bird density and diversity at Van Curler Preserve by habitat type. And yeah, let's get into it. So understanding why this research is important is going to be a key thing. And basically, why I did it, bird density and diversity can really help you understand ecosystem health. And so what that means essentially is with studying birds, I can understand the relationships that exist between those birds and the habitat that they're in and understand what they're utilizing and what they're not. And then this information can be transferred into aiding future management plans, which is something I hope to do later in the presentation. So I focused on four points generally with this project. First, understanding the differences in plant communities at each point. I'll talk about that in a moment. Bird density and diversity, dubbed DND throughout my study, and then comparing DND by the dominant habitat at each point. And then providing manager recommendations based on my findings. So first, we're going to talk about the differences in plant communities at each point. With this, I used all trails to map points that were 0.12 miles apart. The breeding bird survey recommends doing every quarter mile, but that didn't work out. I would have skipped over the prairie entirely and the prairie is just too important to miss. And at each point, I went in and identified every tree, shrub, or other plants that I knew based on my previous experience at each point to then kind of group them into points by what those dominant species present were. So my final groups, I had three. The first one is going to be mixed hardwoods, mostly dominated by black cherry, elms, oaks, and early in the season, tons of may apple. And then I have one point for the dry mess of prairie. Generally, there's a lot of goldenrod, especially early in the season when I was macking this all out. And then I have four points that I've dug. Norway spruce dominated with few understory species. Basically, the only thing in the understory is going to be invasive garlic mustard. We'll talk a lot about that. And it has four points total, these Norway spruce. We don't love that and we'll discuss that as well. So for example, these are what those mixed hardwoods look like. You see a lot of pretty greenery. There's a lot of different layers within the stand and you can see this understory species present. This is kind of what you want to generally a forest to look like. This is our prairie. Early in the season, it's so pretty. You haven't been there. I'd recommend it. All that greenery for the most part is goldenrod. Later in the year, it's really yellow. It was gorgeous. I love it there. And then this is that Norway spruce. So what you're seeing here is there's a lot less of the understory species, very immediate change in height diversity. I mean, you can see straight through and all of that green you are seeing is garlic mustard, which again is invasive, not good to have. Next, I'm going to talk about bird density and diversity throughout the study. So in order to get this bird density and diversity, I really utilized the Merlin ID app. You haven't used it, recommend it. And I conducted my surveys every Friday and Monday, every single week, June through August. There was tons of data, super fun. And now I'm human, so that's an estimate. I miss some times. And then I used Merlin and I was recording three-minute intervals at each point. And then additionally, with these recordings, I was using binoculars as well as my own ears and I was seeing what I was visually seeing or I was hearing or recording those as individual observations. And then with these recordings and why they were so important is I was then able to go back and say, oh, I think I saw this bird. Can I confirm this sighting? Or I think I missed something. Can I go back and see if it's there? Because Merlin will record that species for you and then you can go back and play sounds that are similar and confirm if it was there or not. And I was able to record additional observations, which really helps when human bias is present. And then additionally, I recorded wind speeds, sky conditions, and temperatures, which is following the breeding bird survey guidelines, but it's not really too important and I'll briefly touch on it in a minute. So total numbers recorded was 59 species and 1,424 individual birds. So we have 90 acres at Van Curler. These numbers are really good. I'm very happy with them. But it was notable that there was less recordings during rain, high temperatures, as well as high wind speeds. And then now we're going to compare the DND by dominant habitat. Guys, stick with me. I have so much data and you're going to see it all. There's very few things that are important, which is just seeing how far across these bars go as well as how many colors there are. The colors are representation of the different species present. Okay, so this was our prairie. This is my only point at the prairie. That maximum number on that bottom axis is 32. It's the only one I was able to set that high. The most species I recorded in one day was 30. And as you can see, those bars are often exceeding around the halfway point. And additionally, there's a lot of colors. This is really pretty grass. It's perfect. This is something you would want to see. And that compares then to the mixed hardwood sites. There's five. Again, there's lots of colors where you can see gaps in data if you're noticing that. That was a rain day. So this is proof that when there's heavy rains, you're going to have probably no recordings. And then there's again, lots of colors, lots of things happening. Generally, this was pretty good. I had a lot of success in the mid-hardwoods. Prairie, you're expecting to see more birds. It's open. That's just the fact. You're going to hear more and you're going to see more because there's less barriers. And so that's why it's so different going here and having that 20 as my maximum number. But then when I go to that Norway spruce, it's sad and disappointing. And that's just the truth. These numbers are often not exceeding the halfway point. And again, that maximum number is at 20. And I kept it same. So you could see like, hey, pretty, lots going on. Boo, sad. Yeah, we don't love these numbers. And so to summarize better, those total species recorded between the mixed hardwoods and the prairie specifically are really close together. Spruce has four points. Keep that in mind. It's super low. So you're obviously seeing less species diversity within that Norway spruce. And with it having four points, you would think it'd be closer to the mixed hardwoods and it's not. And then same thing with the total number of birds recorded. If the spruce has four points and the mixed hardwoods has five points, they should be closer together. They worked. The spruce barely outdid the prairie and the prairie only had one point. So again, it's just proving that that spruce habitat is really not great. And this survey is really helping us see that and seeing like, there's nothing going on and it's sad and it's disappointing and it could be better. So we're going to talk about some novel species. Most of these are going to be things that had few observations, our fan favorites. The fans are just me and my coworkers, but that's okay. So we've got the swamp sparrow and the orchard oriole, the eastern kingbird and the scarlet tanager. Love that one. Piliated woodpeckers, that's one of my personal favorites, and a purple martin. We had red-tailed hawks and yellow-throated berios, red-shouldered hawk and the cooper saw, which again is one of my favorites. It's so fun to see. But yeah, and now based on all this information I just presented, I'm going to provide some management recommendations, just a couple that I think would most benefit Van Curler specifically. We're going to start by talking about bird-specific habitat because you can't make recommendations without understanding this. Making management recommendations is going to be very dependent on your species needs. For example, example, excuse me. Woodpeckers require snags. What a snag is, is a hole essentially at the top of a dead tree. So you see a dead tree and you think, get rid of it. They can be vital habitat for things like woodpeckers and you know, you can't get them any other way unless they're man-made and man-making them is not fun. And then Indigo Bunting, for example, really like edge habitats. So Nick had talked a little bit about that, which is just going from those trees to those prairies. That's where they thrive the most. That's where they're going to breed and where they're going to have the most success. And then throughout my schooling and as well as most research you look at, increased height diversity within the stand will directly correlate to increased bird diversity, which is why it's so important in those mixed hardwoods that there's that high diversity and is probably why there is such less diversity within those Norway spruces. So in order to kind of meet these couple of needs I've discussed, we have to increase the presence of native shrubs, shade tolerant trees, it's like things in our understory and et cetera, and improve current edge habitat. So what are some ways to do this? You can do single tree include group selection cutting. This would happen in those spruce-dominated areas. It's very needed because spruce is specifically the Norway spruce. It's naturalized in the state of Michigan, but it's non-native. What this means essentially is providing little ecological benefit and it's really doing nothing for us. And my study is showing that. Chances are, it was planted at some point because it's really good for wood, but we, in an ecological setting, we have no use for it. So with there being that obvious increase, I would then again recommend this happening here. And with cutting these stands down, you're going to increase that sun exposure, which can get rid of those invasive species, specifically that garlic mustard, which grows in shaded regions, and then prevent further degradation of the landscape. And the overall goal with doing this is going to be increasing understory regeneration, allowing shade tolerant and intolerant species to grow. And then mixing both of these types of cuts promotes the most species diversity and increases habitat quality. Then additionally, we're going to do a continued invasive species management literally everywhere. We have been out at Van Curler, I think, more than any other preserve and there's still so much that needs to be done, especially in these understory areas with these invasive shrubs and plants. The spruce again is dominated by garlic mustard, but garlic mustard actually can impact the soil pH, which is really bad long-term because it's going to prevent many native species from being able to grow. And then Woody invasives are just again taking up all the space. They're outcompeting our natives and not giving them any room to grow. And then there's a lot of invasive species in edge habitats. And if we're trying to increase edge habitat, we have to get rid of those invasive species. And all of this, just to say, we want to really increase that habitat quality because it's kind of disappointing right now. And then lastly, I would suggest planting saplings or seedlings if necessary. I say saplings first because saplings have a better chance of outcompeting those invasives and are really going to speed up that regeneration process if we have to go in and cut down trees like in that spruce-dominated area. And we've already talked about doing some planting in the prairie over time of wildflowers and native grasses. And again, all this to say, it's going to increase the habitat quality and it just in general would support biodiversity, both for the land and the animals, but us as well as people. There's so many that go out there and hike and it's going to be really beneficial to give them quality habitat to look at. So in conclusion, preserving current habitat and increasing its quality is imperative for many species, such as the birds from our study, to thrive for many years to come. Without continued management, this proverb will likely be lost to invasive species like the garlic mustard and low-quality non-natives like the Norway spruce. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
No show of support. Hello, everybody.
Hello, everybody. My name is Mike Sefton. I'm excited to present you guys my species observations camera trap survey. I'm excited to present you guys, um, my species observations camera trap survey. Um, so the goal of my survey, um, has been to document the species composition of Sia townships preserves, um, which is important, an important step to help understand how healthy a site is. Um, the best conservation practices, um, best practices for future conservation efforts. And, um, it can help us understand environmental trends in the future. Um, so my process, um, how I conducted my survey. I, um, focused on Van Kurler, West Sia and Sloan preserves. Um, for each observation period, I placed two cameras near a water source for six to eight days. Each observation period was in a different location. Um, and there was two to three observation periods per preserve. After collecting this data, I, uh, reviewed the footage. I identified the species and I compiled the data. I chose to use cameras because, um, this is a way to, uh, accurately identify the animals without disturbing the environment or disturbing the animals. Um, and I chose to place the cameras near water sources, um, to increase the likelihood of getting consistent data since animals will be consistently visiting these water sources. Um, and then we've been hearing about Van Kurler Preserve, so we know a little bit about the makeup of it, which is, um, it's ninety acres. It's, um, got those mixed hardwoods and the prairie and, um, that Norway spruce area as well. Um, but surrounding this preserve is, um, quite a bit of housing close by and then some farm fields as well. For my camera placements, this first, um, camera placement, uh, well, I guess so, each picture top and bottom is, uh, camera one and camera two. Um, so the first placement was, um, at a vernal pool, a little bit into the Norway spruce area. Um, and these cameras are placed about twenty feet apart. The second, um, camera, uh, placement for the second week, it was placed at a separate vernal pool, again about twenty to thirty feet apart. And, um, so this is what I found during those two weeks. Um, this bottom axis goes up to thirty-five and this is showing the number of, um, species observed. Um, and it's not individual species. It's just how many times they show up. Um, so maybe I saw the same raccoon a few times, but, um, I just record those observations. Um, and we can see, um, so during the first week, uh, the first observation period, June sixth to June twelfth, I saw quite a few raccoons and black squirrels. I saw, uh, twenty-nine of those, um, and some, uh, things that I didn't see so much of. Um, I, uh, got a recording of a barred owl calling during that first observation period. Um, and uh, one groundhog, which in the, um, camera footage was climbing a tree, which was interesting. Um, and during that second week, there was, uh, notably less raccoon and fox squirrel sightings. Um, it could have been due to the camera placement or location, um, or it could have been due to something else. Hmm. Um, so West Sia Preserve, um, is two hundred seventeen acres. It's Sia Township's largest preserve. Um, the environment there is very wet. It's, um, got upland and wet, wetland forest. Um, and a lot of vernal pools. The surrounding areas are mostly farm fields and there is some housing nearby. And for my camera placements at West Sia, um, uh, so at the back of this preserve, there's a large vernal pool, um, which is where I chose to place my cameras during both of these observation periods. So they're both facing this vernal pool, but at different locations on the edge. And one thing that's interesting to note is you can see the, uh, difference in the water level, uh, later on in the season, it had gone down quite a bit. And at West Sia, we're seeing, um, a few more, uh, species in that, uh, Y-axis, a few more sightings. And, um, again, I was seeing quite a few raccoons and fox squirrels, as well as eastern gray squirrels, this is during the second observational period. Um, and some interesting sightings to note is, um, during the first observation period, I saw a common snapping turtle. And during the second observation period, I saw a Cooper's or sharp-shen hawk, um, twice. I do believe it was the same hawk, but it showed up twice. Um, and also at the bottom, you can see I saw six wild turkeys during the second observation period. Um, which is a good number. And moving on to Sloan, uh, this is a fifty acre preserve. Um, it's made up of wetland and upland forest and grassland. Um, Mill Creek runs through this preserve. Uh, it's got a seasonal flood plain along this creek and the majority of it is surrounded by farm fields. Um, there is, between these three preserves, this has the most space from, um, the housing areas. And, um, so my camera placements at this, the first camera placement is along Mill Creek, facing the creek bed. The second camera placement is, um, along a vernal pool, um, a little ways into the preserve. Um, that first camera placement is facing down, uh, on the edge of the vernal pool, facing along. And, um, so this third, uh, observation period is the first camera facing a runoff of Mill Creek, just like some, um, muddy area, muddy watery area. And then the second, uh, camera is facing Mill Creek. And, um, so one thing to note is through this first observation period, June thirteenth to June eighteenth, one camera died, um, one day before the observation period ended. Um, but other than that, um, there's a lot of pink on this graph. Um, this June thirtieth to Ju-, uh, July seventh, observation period, we saw, um, a lot of animals in general, a lot of raccoons and eastern gray squirrels as long, as well as chipmunks and American robins. Um, and then August nineteenth to August twenty-fifth, this third observation period, um, we saw thirty-eight whitetail deer. Uh, and yeah, the, um, first observation period, June thirteenth to June eighteenth, uh, compared to the other two observation periods, this one is seemingly a little bit low, but, um, in comparison to the total number of species observed at West Sia and Van Kurler previously, these numbers, um, are matching up with their lowest weeks as well. Um, so the, uh, two later observation periods just have quite a few animals. And, um, some things we hadn't seen yet in the previous observation periods was a great blue heron in, uh, which showed up along Mill Creek. Um, and a lot of different birds, um, like Carolina run, American robin, grackle. Um, these all showed up, um, during this, uh, second observation period. And, uh, so my summary of observations, the total sightings was three hundred ninety-two. The total species observed was nineteen. Um, the big winner was raccoons, seven hundred eight, um, which is just about a quarter of, um, this graph. Um, there's quite a few raccoons as well as fox squirrels, eastern gray squirrels and whitetail deer. Um, and in this pink graph, uh, to the left of the screen is the species I saw only one or two times. Uh, so, um, yeah, a lot of raccoons and a lot of deer. Um, one reason, uh, that these may have been observed so much is these species, um, really enjoy and thrive in edge habitats. Um, they, um, do really well in like mixed environments. Um, like, uh, whitetail deer, they, uh, benefit from open fields and also like close off forests. Um, and raccoons, um, also like they love sticking around a water source, um, due to, well, they have their habit of washing their food and also they, uh, utilize those, um, resources nearby. Um, and as for the squirrels, well, there's always, um, quite a few squirrels to expect in the woods, but, um, something interesting is that, um, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-five have been a very good year for acorn production. Um, and with this food source increasing, um, we can expect the uh, population of squirrels to be increasing as well. So this may be part of the reason why some of these squirrels were observed. Um, and the things we didn't see so much of that, um, maybe would have expected to see more, um, or maybe I expected to see more frequently, um, is coyotes and turkeys, because I feel like I was seeing a lot of turkeys, um, but not on camera. And this is because, um, coyotes and turkeys, they might spend more of their summers in open field areas as opposed to more wooded areas, um, because, uh, their food sources are more in those fields. Um, and one other thing about coyotes, since they're this, um, in this environment, they're a bigger predator. Um, so you might expect to have a lower number of them compared to, um, raccoons because this, uh, prey animal might need to have a larger population to keep up with, um, the predator animals hunting them. And my conclusions, so Van Kurler, nine species were observed, uh, one hundred one total sightings. And at West Side, ten species were observed seventy-three times. Sloan exhibited fourteen species, two hundred nineteen times. And among all observation periods, June thirtieth through July seventh at Sloan, um, this week had the very most out of anything. They had as well species observed, um, with one hundred thirty-eight sightings, which is more than the total of Van Kurler and West Sia individually. Um, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
All right. So my name is Noah. It's going to be a two-part presentation. So the first part is going to be about our butterfly surveys at Liberty Pond. Um, the second part is going to be cataloging our reptile and amphibian encounters. All right. So the goals for my project, my butterfly survey, was to survey Liberty Pond for our native butterfly species. And I wanted to focus on butterfly species, um, similar to a lot of what Nick was saying. Uh, they're very important pollinators, uh, that regulate our plant populations, but they also function as, uh, forage for a lot of our predators and our preserves as well. So things like our birds, you know, and also our frogs and amphibians. And so I submitted our standardized data to Pollerbase for their long-term population assessments. Um, they release these papers every year and they take all this data from multiple different survey routes. And they compile it and do sort of long-term population assessments to see, you know, statistical trends in butterfly populations across the nation. So, um, I added the survey route to the Michigan Butterfly Network. That was another big goal for this. And you can see it right over here off to the right. Um, so this is a screenshot of Liberty Pond. Um, and all of our habitat types are delineated here and they're coded by color. So yellow is going to be our grasslands. Um, black is going to denote our shrublands. And the white up there, it's kind of hard to see, that's some of our exposed clay, which is another really important habitat for these butterflies. Uh, we actually documented them exhibiting a behavior called puddling. Um, so they will supplement their diet, especially the males, with, uh, minerals and nutrients that they gather from the ground, especially exposed gravel and clay areas like that. All right. And so we also wanted to establish a baseline of Liberty Pond's species and their composition for future surveys, um, and so that we can analyze population trends on our own in the future. So we began by selecting and mapping the route and the habitat types like mentioned previously. Uh, and we visited the site bi-weekly over a twelve-week survey period. And we began each survey by reporting the weather. So we recorded the temperature, the wind, the cloud cover as well. And we took those at the end too. So the survey route was about three quarters of a mile long. We walked this at a consistent pace, less than one mile per hour. Um, the Pollerbase protocols, they call for five to seven minutes per one hundred meters. So that ended up taking us about an hour and a half to, uh, walk the whole route. All right. And then so we identified and recorded all butterflies within a five meter radius, just kind of with this box here showing. Um, anything outside of that, we pretty much had to disregard. So there were plenty of species actually that we documented formally, but we couldn't include them in the survey because they weren't in the confines of this polygon. And so after we identified and recorded all these butterflies, uh, we tallied them out on a sheet. We entered the data and we uploaded it to Pollerbase Network. All right. So this is the data from our first two visits. Um, visit one, we actually saw the least total amount of butterflies out of any visit. It's a pretty cold and dreary day, so that's kind of to be expected. Um, but this was in the midst of our Baltimore Checker Spot flight, their first flight of the year. Their only flight, actually. They have one flight and it's typically going to be in late May to early June. Um, and yeah, so they dominated the first couple of survey periods, but we also got a couple of skippers there at the beginning. Second visit, it was a little warmer. We ended up seeing a lot higher species diversity here as well. So we got some species like the red spotted purple, the viceroy started showing up. Um, this was the only survey period where we documented common rimless, that's a sayer species, which was really promising to see. They're actually a woodland species. So it was very cool to get to see them in sort of not woodland habitat, not classic habitat for the species. And then you can see towards the bottom, there's our whites and sulpers. Those ended up being our most prevalent species later on, but this was at the very beginning of their flight. So you can just sort of start to see them poking through. Um, and also the monarch started hatching out around this time as well. So for visits three and four, we saw higher diversity and higher total numbers as well. Uh, warmed up a lot considerably for our survey periods at this time. We ended up seeing some new species here as well. So the great spangled friddle is one that showed up. Um, we also saw the buckeye, the common buckeye. Um, that was actually our only, uh, documented occurrence of the species throughout our observations. So that was really, really cool to see. Um, a couple of skipper species as well. So the zavulon skipper, I believe that was our only observation of the species. Um, and this is sort of when the Baltimore Checker Spots started kind of dying off after their first flight. Um, and then we also started seeing some of our gossemer wings, so our blues, like the eastern tail blue. Um, and you can see the clouded sulfur and cabbage white there on visit three are starting to become a little more prevalent. Also saw some little wood satyrs here, another woodland species. That was really cool to see as well. And then for visit four, this is when the pearl crescent started their hatch. Um, they started becoming much more prevalent than they had previously. And we also documented red spotted purples, which are a species of brush-footed butterfly. Um, we actually documented them on this visit, depositing eggs on birch trees. That was really cool to see. We actually have like a visual aid for what their host plan is at this particular spot. Some more viceroy's as well, and mostly in that, uh, sort of shrubland habitat. Um, eastern tail blues as well. And then you can really start to see the, uh, the whites and sulfur started becoming prevalent. So clouded sulfur's really picked up, cabbage whites as well, and the orange sulfur's too. And this was when we saw the majority of our swallowtails here. So we saw black swallowtails. And we saw our only recorded giant swallowtail, which was promising to see. We documented these at other preserves. We documented these at other preserves outside of the carpines of the survey as well. Um, but it was really promising to see them at this particular site. And the dun skipper is another one here as well, another new one. All right, so for visits five and six, final two visits. Uh, these are where we saw the highest diversity and as well as the highest total numbers species. So the pearl crescent dominated on visit five, that was at the height of their flight. Um, but we still saw some purples and some viceroy's as well, a couple of common ringless there as well. It was a really busy day and we um ended up not being able to identify everything, some of them kind of escaped off, but we could ident- identify them through family. Um, so we could still include those for our family totals at the end. American copper was another species that pro- that sort of popped up on visit five. Um, this is species we hadn't seen prior, so that was promising. Um, and the clouded sulfurs and the orange sulfors are beginning to really pick up, they pick up more so towards visit six. And you can see, um, yeah, clouded sulfur was by far our most prevalent species. So the X Texas is offset, visit five is thirty, and you could see for visit six, we had to set it to two hundred. We ended up seeing almost a hundred and eighty total clouded sulfors, so that was really promising to see any species in those sort of numbers, um wasn't really expecting that. We also saw black swallowtail that week as well, and cabbage whites were there too. Silver spotted skipper um was another one, another new one for that survey period. As well as the indigo dusk wing, so we actually reported thirty of them here. Didn't see them anywhere else, but we pretty much timed their uh their flight perfectly, we never really saw them on any other surveys. So just to reiterate, here's some of our more common species. Clouded sulfur is gonna be off to the bottom left. Top right's our our cabbage white, bottom right is gonna be our pearl crescent. Middle is our Baltimore Checker Spot, and then on the bottom there is the eastern tail blue. And then so here's some of the least commonly observed species throughout our survey period. Giant swallowtails off to the left, we have the American copper, common buckeye. Two skippers down there, one to the left is gonna be our dun skipper, one to the right is the silver spotted skipper. So, yeah, we wanted to document our species here, we kind of compiled it in this um table off to the right. We ended up finding twenty-three total species throughout surveys. Um, however, there was more, we estimate probably about thirty total at Liberty Pond, just including the ones that we weren't able to count. Um, eight hundred total, over eight hundred total individuals logged in six families. So we averaged about a hundred and thirty-four butterflies per survey. And the most common species and the least common are kind of reiterated there. Um, here's our species composition, so this is each species percentage of the total observations. Um, you can see clouded sulfur there is gonna be our winner. Second place is gonna be Baltimore Checker Spots by a little bit. Cabbage whites up there for third, pearl crescent, eastern tail blue, and then the indigo dusk wing is gonna be our fifth most prevalent species. After that, it sort of drops off, so these were sort of species that were less prevalent and less commonly encountered. And then you could kind of go all the way to the bottom and then you can see some of our rarer species like mentioned previous. So here's the composition by family, so I split it up by percentage. Um, and our whites and sulfors are four to six percent, so that's the vast majority. Thirty-eight percent are gonna be our brush foots, so like your monarchs, you know, red spotted purples, things of that nature. Um, six percent, or sorry, eight percent is gonna be our skippers, that's our third-place category. Six percent was gonna be our um blues, so our gossemer wings, so eastern tail blues, American coppers, you know, things like that. And our least frequently encountered are gonna be our saters and our swallowtails there. All right, so I recommended some host plants uh specifically for Liberty Pond, but also for other preserves. And I tried to look at host plants for the species that were less frequently encountered, so that can hopefully bolster their populations in the future. And I also looked at some species that were common in the area, but we didn't end up encountering on our survey. So I wanted to provide them maybe some valuable host plant species to, you know, further increase the population in the future, so. Hackberries one, pop tree, Virginia snake root is our native host plant for the pipeline swallowtail. Um, docks are really important for a lot of our skipper species, as well as yellow and nutsedge, a lot of our set species are very important for our skippers. Um, sass for us is important not only for our butterfly species, like our swallowtails, but also plenty of our um moth species as well. Villets are mostly a weed, but they're the majority of our host plants for our fritilleries. Black cherry is another, that's very important for butterflies and moles, as well as tulip tree. And pan grass is a specific host species for some of our skippers. All right, so this is the second part of my presentation, this is gonna be about our incidental herb encounters. All right, so the goals of this were to map and document the reptile and amphibian species on our preserves and in our township as a whole. And I also wanted to identify some undocumented species in our time working here, but ones that we had suitable habitat for, so that we can potentially survey for and manage for in the future. And I also wanted to evaluate which listed species we have in our reserves, so. Each species is given a designation by the state and certain ones are afforded protection by state law. And we ended up having four species that receive state protection here. All right, so we kind of bumped into a lot of these species while doing others' other work. Um, and we call these incidental herb encounters. Um, and we accidentally bumped into twenty-three species, which is much more than I was expecting. And we had two species of special concern, one threatened and one endangered species on our preserves. And we encountered these in a variety of ways. Um, some of them were found basking on roads, sidewalks, other ones were on logs. Some of them were undercover objects and logs as well, and then other ones we just encountered on the move. Um, and Murphy created a incidental herb encounter application on survey one, two, three. And this allowed us to document each species and record the exact coordinates that we, that were the exact coordinates that we encountered them at. And it allowed us to um compile these files digitally. All right, so starting off with our snakes, um at the top, we have our observed snake species, so we had five total species. An eastern milk snake we found at Van Koller Preserve. We also found garst snakes at almost all of our preserves. Um, the Butler's garst snake is a state-listed species, state special concern. Um, me and Murphy found this one crossing on uh, I believe it was, oh gosh, Marshall Road, yes, thank you. Um, northern red-bellied snakes were found as well at many of our preserves, including the Township Hall. And the northern water snake was found at Sloan. And so the bottom five are gonna be some species that we have suitable habitat for, uh most notably the kirtland snake, which is a state endangered, and the queen snake, which is special concern. All right, so for turtles, we ended up finding four turtle species, one non-native. Uh, midland pin turtles were discovered at multiple preserves, common snapping turtle as well was found in multiple preserves. Um, the blanched turtle was documented in our township, but not in our park property. So it was right next to Liberty Pond, across the road and on a private wetland, we documented at least one at that uh wetland. And up in there, one of the top pictures there is that reddared slider. Uh, we found this guy at Liberty Pond, this is a non-native species, so it was likely released as a pet. Um, so not a native species, but it's just another one that we encountered here. And then those bottom three are three potential species we have suitable habitat for. All right, so frogs and toads, we ended up having the highest diversity of these guys. Um, we started with our American toes, cream frogs, northern leper frog, we found at Sloan. Um, wood frogs we found at West Sio especially, and also five oats. Um, gray tree frogs were found here as well, especially here at the Township Hall. We found spring peepers, western forest frogs too. Um, the most interesting encounter was gonna be our blanchard's cricket frogs, so these are a state-threatened species. And Murphy documented these calling at Liberty Pond, which was super promising, which is also a historical uh documented population of the species. And for possible species, the pickel frog is possible, Sloan has suitable habitat, but it's not entirely. All right, so moving on to my favorite, we have salamanders or caudata. And we found redback salamanders under logs at a variety of our properties, um as well as blue-spotted salamanders. Spotted salamanders we found, especially at Van Koller, we found multiple of these there. Um, and we also found small-mouthed salamanders on our preserve, which was on one of our preserves, excuse me. And this was our most exciting find, because these are state-endangered. Um, they reach the northern limit of the range here, they go down south to southern Texas. Um, and we have two, two pictures here of them at our preserves on, on the bottom right, so those two are gonna be our small-mouthed salamanders. So very promising to see those here and see them in numbers reproducing. And as well as the unisexual mole salamander complex, uh which is a really interesting species complex. Um, it's an all-female lineage of salamanders. And they steal genetic information from males of pure species. And they use it to trigger meiosis or to um and sometimes they can incorporate their genetics into their offspring, so it's really cool. Creates this whole uh spectrum of morphology in their offspring, it's really, really interesting stuff, but we documented many of those here at our preserves as well. And our bottom three, um it's gonna be the tiger salamander, we have, especially at Marshall, excuse me, uh Van Koller, we have suitable habitat. Eastern new as well, and mud puppy in Sloan, too. Uh, and just as a management uh recommendation, just more of a general thing, especially for amphibians. Um, it's important to delineate and protect our vernal ponds. Uh, almost all of these are dependent on our vernal pools, and we're lucky to have plenty of vernal pools on our properties. Um, these are really, really important, they're, they're temporary wetlands, so they'll dry up, you know, in typically late summer. Some of them don't dry up every year, um they'll remain wet for multiple years at a time. But they're extremely important habitat, not only for these species, uh but for plenty other vernal pool species as well. So we can continue to delineate those and offer buffer areas around them where we can restrict development and try to reduce any sort of pesticide or herbicide use, and if we do, gonna make sure to use those um aquatic-friendly herbicides. All right, I believe that is it. Special thanks to all the people that helped me along the way, so thanks.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanna thank everybody for your clear and well-prepared presentations. I wanna uh turn it over to the board if there are um questions or comments.
I wanna thank all of you for this, um Murphy, I think you have uh excellent staff here. I think it's real important the research that these folks have done, they've given us a baseline of what we have in our preserves and what we don't have. Um, I noticed we only had a few monarchs, that, that's very disappointing. And I, I was surprised you didn't see any beavers at um um Sloan, because I think a couple of years ago, there was a lot of beaver damage, and I'm surprised you didn't see any, so. But um, no, I wanna thank you guys, I think this is real important, and it gives us an idea of what we need to do to um encourage more of the uh native species to uh come to Sio Township, but thank you.
Any other comments?
Well done, Murphy and team, it was very nice, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, everybody.
Excellent job, everyone.
And thank you for your hard work all summer for Sio Parks, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Um, next up in reports, we have our utility director report, a written report contained here, and also Brandon is here for any um questions.
Good evening, board. Thank you for having me today. Um, so yes, I did uh prepare um a director's report spanning uh my last one, which was of May twenty-five, um so this is spanning from May to October of some of the different things that the utilities team accomplished or worked on. Um, so I submitted that in the agenda and I'm here to answer any questions if you have any um regarding that.
Are there questions or comments for Brandon? I just wanna thank you and your team, you all are doing a, a great job of much more proactive maintenance on the system. Um, and it's, it's even visible as we go around Sio Township. David?
There's a technical to have, as you, I mentioned, see here, you have the water main with you. Several of the bolts broke, is that technical?
Yes, uh due to the age over time, uh and most of the time, it's uh the different types of bolts that are used. Uh, back in the day, stainless steel bolts weren't used predominantly, so the, the bolts and stuff rot and end up coming loose, and then when you turn it, you put strain on those on bolts and eventually, you know, it springs a leak and the gasket gives away. Um, so it'll happen um as we continue to do the valve exercising program, I think we have roughly five hundred bells out of the eight hundred um exercise, and this is just something that never stops. So, once we accomplish all the, the valve being exercised, we'll start right back over again. Um, so I would expect, you know, a handful each year until we
They're kind of calm.
Yeah, they're gonna be calm.
It goes a bit through.
Well, uh, I would still say, um, in my experience with the system, I mean, Sio Township is still um, you know, our, our structure, our infrastructure is still doing very well. Um, so it, it, you know, fully, and every time we did a water main break, it seemed like uh we were breaking a valve or a valve was breaking due to the age. Uh, so you fix a leak and you uh fix another leak the next day, so uh we're not in that situation here at the township.
Hey, any other comments?
I had a question. Um, Brendan, I saw in the packet, we had the approval for the sanitary sewer metering study. If you could just briefly describe to the board the advantages to doing that, what does it mean exactly in terms of studying our capacity and all of that, just briefly?
Yeah, so the township has a capacity limit for sewer with the city of Ann Arbor that we negotiated. Uh, we all know that we're reaching that um capacity limit, so this information is gonna be vital to determine how many REUs we have left with the town, or with the city of Ann Arbor. Additionally, our, our Jackson Road pump station is, is running out of capacity as far as the pumping you know, ability to pump it out to the city of Ann Arbor, so uh as we grow closer to that um REU number, um we're gonna have to be resizing our pumps in order to uh keep up with the demand flow. Um, along with the additional upgrades that we're gonna need to have um happen. Um, so this study is gonna help OHM um give us vital information on the necessary repairs and upgrades that we're gonna need to our pump station coming soon. Um, so tho- those are the main, uh the main reasons for the sewer study.
Thank you.
Uh, David and then Ryan.
What happens when we reach capacity of Jackson Pump Station?
Uh, so that's when uh, you know, we'll be prepared ahead of time, this is what that study that OHM is helping us with is going to show us so that we can prepare ahead of time to uh look at our pump station, um see if we have to reconfigure it anyway in order to uh, you know, put bigger pumps in there so that we can pump more, more sewage to the city of Ann Arbor.
Thank you for all the work that you and your staff have been doing, it's wonderful to see how much uh you're catching up on things that have needed some attention and continue to work. Maybe this is a question for Matt, Matt doesn't have to answer out of the spot. Is it a pump question, or is it also a pipe question, how much volume you could throw through a pipe even with a big pump? I'll defer to Matt since he's here. Or I don't know, Brandon, do you have the answer? I, I just thought, there, there's the pump and then there's how much you can physically throw through a pipe.
Yeah, there's, it's a sixteen-inch force main to Ann Arbor, that's plenty big pipe for what you guys have and what you're masturbating for, the pumps are the limiting factor there. Um, the one other thing that the meter study will help is Brendan's spending a lot of proactive time fixing leaks in manholes, leaks in pipes. It'll help identify where to focus his attention on, because we, this will be the third round of meterings we've done in over like a fifteen-year period, that we try to do in about the like seven, eight years. Um, so we have a baseline from the original metering study, we'll, we'll have from the second time back when previous utility director did some lighting. And then Brandon's been attacking in five different phases. Um, the sewer televising and the metering study will kind of pinpoint where we were and where we are today. And then where he can effectively spend uh money on rehabilitation of pipes and manholes.
Great. Thank you so much, Brandon and Matt, appreciate it.
Thank you both.
Okay, next up is our regular reports. And I'm just gonna go down the list if that's okay. Um, Treasurer Yeapole, if you'd be so kind to give a treasurer's update, as well as an update on the multimodal transit committee.
Sure, thank you, uh, we have not yet met for the multimodal transit committee, but last night the planning commission appointed uh it's my understanding, Kim Moore and Jan Colbertson is the other two members, uh addition to Trustee Reed and myself and Ops Coordinator Aiken, so uh we'll work on getting that meeting scheduled here in the near future. Uh, we're getting ready to send out tax bills here, in about probably three weeks, they'll be sent to the printer for the winter bill. Um, we'll remind people that the fire assessment is two point seven bills on this bill, and I'm sure I will get several phone calls about that when people get their bill, questioning why their bill went up. Uh, but just, just for those listening, uh also working with the bank to uh switch out signers, since obviously we have a staffing change in finance and we're getting several other projects, including uh meeting with uh the WAVE and AAATA reps uh here next week, so look forward to having more share next time, thank you.
Great. Um, David, update from ARX and LPC. Okay, great, thank you. Kathleen, Planning Commission.
Um, yes, we approved last night the chicken ordinance. Um, that will, uh, come before the board, uh, shortly. Um, John Reiser, at the last time I mentioned text amendments, you asked if there's a public hearing and I, I think I was incorrect on that. Actually, I know I was incorrect. Um, the public hearing happens at the planning commission. So the board doesn't engage in those.
Great.
Um, also, uh, Chairperson Culberson noted, and I'll reiterate, that tomorrow evening there's, um, an educational session, food waste composting is going to be right here. It's a half an hour, uh, from seven to seven thirty. It will also be on Zoom. And then further, there's an initiative from the Huron River, uh, watershed doing a workshop on, um, setting goals and priorities, um, for the watershed. And they are requesting if we could get four trustees to do interviews with them. That would be a phone conversation. Um, if you're interested, please give me your name and phone number so they can reach you. Anybody who wants to volunteer right now? I'll be doing it. Um, it's December the first, if I, sorry if I didn't say that, December the first from six to eight. So the interviews are prior to the workshop. So they want to get a feel for, um, how the board or the trustees view, uh, the watershed, um, the biosphere, bio reserve areas, um, how we address those. There'll be a discussion of the open overlay district. So this is important and significant as we look at how that blends with development and, um, how we conserve some of these properties or these areas, especially if they're in bio reserves. I don't think we've, um, to date, um, been inclusive enough of a bio reserve as identified by the watershed council, um, that we may look at additional zoning on that to preserve those.
Can we talk later?
Sure. Yeah, okay.
Thank you for that, Kathleen. That seems like something to be important to have full, full participation in. Anything else from planning, Kathleen?
Uh, nothing significant.
Okay, great.
I could say a word on Gelman. I was going to.
Okay, go ahead, Kathy.
Um, I sent a recent MLive article to all board members a few days ago. It's a fairly comprehensive update on what's happening in terms of the EPA potential listing and gives the history of the Gelman flu. It, it's very, it was an excellent article written by Lucas Larson. He did a very good job.
Thank you, Kathy, and thanks for staying on top of that issue on our behalf. Um, John, any updates?
We, we're, we don't have anything to present today, but we are working on a committee charge and some of what we discussed. And I think we're close. We can say we're going to put it on next agenda. It is room.
Okay.
So November twelfth will be a proposed, um, committee charge and proposed contract with GCSI. Is that correct?
No, it wasn't a contract.
There's none of the charge.
Oh, yeah. And I wasn't trying to have you strange, John. I'm sorry.
But we, we actually have a report about when there are so many added on things. We don't want it. It's like, here's one more. But our, our product is done.
Yeah, I was just defining the product, which as the board directed a while ago was, I think, a, a committee charge, but then also wasn't the proposed contract coming back? I believe so.
I thought we were using the old contract with new duties added into it.
Yeah. Yeah. I think we're saying the same thing, Kathy.
How are we going to best utilize GCSI and who on the township is going to do that? Is it going to be electeds or is it going to be a committee? And how are we going to find out what we want as a township or by way of lobbying, by way of funding opportunities?
Right.
And how do we communicate that to GCSI? And how do we hold them accountable? Or how do we find out what they're doing for us? That's kind of what we're working on, to be honest.
Sounds good. So do you all want to plan on November twelfth? Okay, great, thanks. Christie, do you have any updates?
I, I just want to update the board that, um, the HVAC system, uh, installation will be starting on November tenth. Phase one and one B, um, and that should, we'll go through the, uh, end of November, early December. Then starting with phase two, that should be completed in early January and then starting with phase three in early January with final completion the third to fourth week of January. So.
That's pretty good.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Will there be disruption throughout all of it?
There will be. Um, phase one, we won't have to move staff. Phase two or phase one B, we'll have to move a couple of employees and then early December is when we'll have to move the front office. And, but it, I, I'm not too concerned with it. I mean, it's, we'll, we'll make it work. So.
Thanks for your efforts on that.
Sure.
Kathleen?
Um, yes, I, I want to let the board know that for, uh, the next meeting, I have placed an item on for revision of the rules of order. Um, we have some proposed changes. I would ask people to submit any goals. Uh, and if you want to write the language for that, that'd be great. Or if you want to list it as bullet points for something for discussion. Uh, this is a follow-on to, uh, not the last board meeting, but the board meeting before to address, uh, concerns that, uh, board members, um, expressed about, um, the robustness of rules of order and potential changes. Also, I, I do want to, um, note that based on the federal government shutdown, starting on November the first, which is just a few days from now, uh, SNAP benefits are being, um, suspended. I believe that's also the WIC program. This is directly related to the shutdown. It is worth noting that there is a SNAP revert, reserve fund that our government is not using for this shutdown. So I'm asking people to be, please be generous to food banks. This is going to hit people hard. Um, a- anything you can do would be appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathleen.
I just have, uh, one comment and then a brief update. I, I was heartened, Kathleen, to see in the news that the, um, Michigan Dems just introduced a bill to backfill the SNAP benefits. You know, thirteen percent of people in Michigan rely on SNAP benefits. Um, so there is a proposal, um, and I don't know, Kathy, if you or, or John or David are in touch with GCSI, but I mean, I would definitely want to express Syo Township's, at least my support. I don't know if we need to take a vote. But it's of urgent nature to, to get this backfill in because as Kathleen said, the federal government has, um, assured the country that they will not dip into that reserve fund to even reimburse states. Um, so, I mean, I, I would make, make a motion, um, to express support through our lobbyists for the current proposal, um, to backfill the SNAP benefits with state funds.
Support.
Is there a discussion?
I agree with you guys. I support it.
Yes, um, I, we need to do something as state level as well as the individual level. I support all of those efforts.
Okay, there's a motion on the table. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Kathy.
And I'll contact John tomorrow.
Excellent.
Yeah, convey this to him.
Great.
And then I just have a, a brief update. We have an election next Tuesday, as you all know. I want to thank everybody who's been working on it. We've received about two thousand ballots. We'll have all five polling places open. And again, uh, weekend hours, nine to two on Saturday, Sunday, one to five in preparation. I want to thank the nearly fifty election inspectors who will be working. Everybody at the front office. It's been going really smoothly. And every election, even the small ones, um, take, takes a baseline level of work and it's, it's always good practice for all of us. So thank you, everybody, for your work on that. Okay, are there any other reports? Are we ready to move on? Ready to move on? Okay, next up is K eleven. Uh, pulled from consent and it is permission to apply for SEMCOG end-of-life sidewalks and trails, one-time grant opportunity. Uh, turn it over to, uh, Kathleen for questions.
Sure. I, I pulled this because, um, I don't find enough detail in here to approve this. Um, the attachment, SEMCOG grant information packet is not information about the grant itself. I'm not sure whether that was in there. Um, I'm wondering what is the shovel-ready project that would be, um, presented in this grant? Um, I don't see dates for when the grant is to be applied, information about the grant, the deadlines, uh, the potential amount of requests. I just don't see that stuff in here. It talks about unauthorized dispersal of two million dollars. Um, I don't know what the chances are. I don't know how many applicants. I don't know what Syo is asking for. So I would like to see those details, please.
Okay. So, so for starters, um, when is this grant application due? Okay. Um, and, and I do, I do agree. Um, I see the special report on accessible public rights of way. Um, do you want to share a little bit about it?
Yes, what was attached? This is the informational packet that is directly linked to the end-of-life sidewalk, um, on SEMCOG's, SEMCOG's website. And I agree that there's very little information regarding the end-of-life fund. Um, I, I think that's most likely in response to the fact that this is a one-time pot of money. So I don't think it's typically something they offer. So they didn't go into great detail as the packet really refers to a lot of the, um, um, repeated grants that are offered through SEMCOG. So I agree, there's not a lot of information listed on the website, but what we do know is that, um, this is an amount of money that can be used for repairs relating to the ZEB road pathway. We, in terms of shovel-ready projects, um, I, I also wanted to put that in there, um, to emphasize something, but I can come back to that later. Uh, but for us, our shovel-ready projects would be improvements of the boardwalk. We've already invested about sixty-five thousand dollars in the last two years just on repairing boardwalks one through three, and we have estimates for the rest of the boardwalks that are going to need repairs in years to come. Also considering that those repairs are, um, um, will have to be repeated over time. So as long as we can attribute funds now to the repairs, there'll be no need to be done. We also have, uh, part of this ZEB road pathway that is failing in terms of it starting to collapse inward, which is causing puddling. So in the winter, that will most likely result in ice and then increased risk for the, the users that are using it. Using, especially cycling, could see a, a larger risk if that's not to be fixed. And those are just a few examples of some of the long-term maintenance issues, but if we can address the issues we know exist now from this grant, then we can save the money we were already planning to use, um, for the boardwalk repairs and for the actual pathway repairs later when this one-time pot of money no longer is available.
So, oh, sorry.
I was just going to add, this was kind of a surprise to us. We follow and, and work with SEMCOG pretty close. Um, and this kind of came out pretty quickly. Um, the twenty-twenty-six projects that they're looking for are really focused on getting people to transit. Um, but this, the follow-up for the twenty-twenty-seven money is really where they're focused on. Uh, not new paths, not gaps, but really restoring or rehabilitating existing, which is perfect. Um, it's honestly something that you guys have identified in your CIP. Pretty much most of the communities that we work with in Washtenaw County are jumping on this. It's a pretty low, uh, light lift for, to prepare the application. I don't know how they're going to do it, but we are expecting that many communities will get this, but they're going to spread it pretty thin. Um, so the risk is pretty low. Um, so we're, we're engaged with multiple communities throughout Washtenaw, Oakland, and Wayne County. It's not trying to.
Okay. So I, I guess just my, my basic question is what, roughly what amount of money do you think we'd be applying for? For what kind of specifically? Is it the area that's failing? And how much would it cost for OHM to write it? If that's the plan, I'm not sure.
Probably less than a couple thousand dollars to prepare if that, um, Murphy and I had a conversation about week, week or two ago, um, where, you know, we're prepared to prep this, um, and stay under whatever budget a lot and you guys want. But it, it probably wouldn't be more than, be ten hours of, of Stacy's time. Um, Vince Ranger, who formerly was with MDOT, um, who works as close with SEMCOG, is kind of we keep seeing this in our office, um, and we described Syo's potential projects with the ZEB road pathway, its connection, future connection to the border-to-border, thinks it's a good candidate. Um, what a dollar amount? I think that's, there's a little bit of strategy involved, so we'd have to sit down and talk. But what I was recommending to Murphy is we look at the CIP, see what monies you guys have. Do like a fifty-fifty match of some type. I would expect that no community is going to get more than a hundred thousand dollars, something in that range, fifty to a hundred thousand. So you're probably looking at, um, you know, maximum, you know, two hundred thousand dollars of repairs between asphalt, asphalt milling, fill, patching, boardwalk repair. You probably have that or close to it. And you'd match or worst case, or if we wanted to scale this back, a fifty thousand dollar grant with a fifty thousand dollar match for a hundred thousand. How they would take care of you. Shovel-ready is pretty, um, big and these things can be prepared pretty quickly, especially with some of the asset, uh, analysis that Murphy's done with her team. And pretty easy to take some photographs and put together some unit prices to be, you know, able to bid this fairly quickly. So.
Great. Ryan?
Uh, I was going to say, I also spoke with, uh, Matt when this came up as an opportunity, specifically because, uh, Marie from WAVE had expressed interest in trying to make something work for the transit piece that's available. Unfortunately, that did not work out for a couple of reasons. Uh, WAVE hadn't, hadn't done this particular type of grant before and, uh, AAAA couldn't, uh, devote enough resources to get it done fast enough for the grant. But this seems like a good opportunity for the funds that are available for fiscal year twenty-seven and things that make some sense.
And if I could interject, Ryan?
Yeah.
I, I mean, honestly, it, it, it's kind of a new thing that rolled out and I think if, if successful, SEMCOG might have more of these. I'd be willing to just hold back any time charge to Syo Township. If you're successful in getting it, I'll send the invoice along. If you're not, I'll, I'll write off that time. It's not a big deal. So it's really a joke, Chris.
Other comments?
Just, I just have a process question. Um, when we either get approved or denied, denied for grants, um, let's go the approval route. Do we have a process for communicating that? And, um, thank goodness we have a finance director coming. Management.
So, so we, you know, Kathleen, quite seriously, we've had a draft grants policy for three years that we've never had the capacity to implement, but I would imagine coming back to the board with a proposal to have a process where we, you know, approve application, but we also approve acceptance, you know, of grants, one or the other, um, so that we can really commit to the amount of match and things.
That'd be great. Thank you for that.
Um, I, I would suggest if, if. I would suggest, if it would make sense to others on the board, that, you know, I would support this if we could maybe modify the motion a little bit to kind of state what the purpose would be. And maybe it's even as simple as, you know, for the purpose of repairs on ZEB road pathway? Does that work? Is that, okay?
It's part of that.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, I'd make a motion to approve the request to apply for SEMCOG End-of-Life Sidewalks and Trails One-Time Grant Opportunity for the Purpose of Repairs to the ZEB road pathway.
John is getting...
I'm gonna give it to John, because it was so sad. John wins. That was, it was... He was second, but it was so sad.
I didn't know John was gonna come back with a French accent.
I know. All right, so motion by Flintoff, support by Ryzer, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thanks so much, Matt Murphy.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Murphy.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is N3, the Food Waste Pilot Outreach Program. Kristi and Jan?
Take it away, Kristi. Okay. So, we have the food compost pilot that was approved by the board. We had talked about having a temporary staff person do the outreach. And Jan had, we came up with the Zero Waste as the outfit that would be able to help us. And I think, Jan, do you wanna jump in and... There she is.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Oh, great. Yeah, so, yes, so, the Environmental Sustainability Test Force is excited about this program, but it's a little difficult for, you know, volunteers to meet some of the outreach goals that we have, which include, you know, outreach to residents, multifamily businesses. So, and also emphasizing it's really looking at reducing overall waste and contamination in our recycling stream. So, the idea that while we're talking about food waste compost, we can also address reminding people of what's recyclable and also dealing with the other options for composting at home. So, trying to be very inclusive in our outreach and looking at the broader reduction of waste totally through the township. So, zerowaste.org is a nonprofit, and you can see... I'm not sure what sort of materials Kristi has to distribute, but they have, they've supported a lot of Ann Arbor's initiatives and other municipalities. They also, part of this would be running a zero-waste kind of challenge for people in the spring and some ongoing engagement. So, you know, enthusiasm for the program continues. So, those are the goals. It isn't hourly, not to exceed. And the goal would be, they would also attend ESTF meetings, our monthly meetings, to kind of give progress so that we can collaborate well with them.
Great, thank you, Jan. I'm supportive of this. I'm just noting, Kristi, there's an outline of the program, but no contract. Is that something that our township attorney and you could?
Yeah.
Develop? Okay. I mean, I would certainly support this, subject to the development of an approved contract by our township attorney. Are there other comments or questions?
I would also be supportive under the same condition and appreciate all the work that you've done to put this together. Thank you, Jan.
Thank you, Jan.
Comments or questions? All right.
In favor.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the 12-month Food Waste Pilot Outreach Program with zerowaste.org and approve expenses not to exceed $7,500 from Fund 101701, subject to the development of an approved contract by our township attorney. Okay, motion by Flintoff, support by Reed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion adopted. Thank you for your work, Jan.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jan.
Thanks.
Next up is N1. This is an item we talked about quite a while ago, but coming back to the board for approval of an amendment. As you all know, we have an agreement to provide IT services for LASSA. This would extend that agreement to include cash receipting and accounts payable. This has been really well-vetted internally and with LASSA. I want to thank Ryan and his team. We had kind of a, kind of mini-training in-house here on the protocol of how we'll implement all of this. It's something we feel we would be able to do. And LASSA would be compensating us for 800 a month, kind of in line with the cost allocation plan. Are there questions or comments about this?
I would just like to thank Clark Flintoff and everybody else that's been involved in this process, including the LASSA board, for getting us to this point. We're excited to be able to have people's checks deposited in a much more efficient manner and timely manner, so that way we don't have to have questions coming in about, I dropped off my payment a week or two ago.
Yeah.
Why is my check not cashed?
Yeah.
We certainly are ready to go and look forward to getting things kicked off here in the next few days. Thank you.
Thank you for the work you've done on this, Jessica.
Yeah, it'll improve things for customers. It's also gonna reduce risk for the township, so... All right, with that, is there a motion?
I'd make the motion to adopt proposed agreement for services with LASSA, subject to SIO Township Attorney final review.
Is there a second?
Support.
Right, support by Brant? Motion by Yapo, support by Brant, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passes. MOU is adopted. Thank you. Next up is the resolution, N4. A resolution in recognition of Rebecca Maude's service to SIO Township. We all received Rebecca's letter of resignation, receiving it with sadness last Monday, effective this Friday. She is moving on to take a position in a neighboring jurisdiction, a little closer to home, that's gonna work better for her. So, we are all wishing her the very best in that. It just so happens to, but is unrelated to, the hiring of the finance director. And I hope that this board is fully committed to backfilling Rebecca's position so that we'll be fully staffed as a finance team. But that said, I wanted to offer a resolution in recognition of her service to the township. Would it be okay if we read it out loud for the record?
Yes, please.
Whereas Rebecca Maude has faithfully served SIO Township in the area of accounting and finance for 12 years, whereas she has often gone above and beyond the call of duty to serve SIO Township residents and taxpayers, and where Rebecca has always kept an eagle eye out for errors or potential waste of taxpayer dollars and graciously reminded staff and officials of these risks. And whereas Rebecca has strictly followed the myriad of rules, policies, and laws that direct what can and cannot be done with public monies. And whereas throughout the pandemic, Rebecca served as a critical infrastructure worker, ensuring that township employees were paid and township business continued uninterrupted. Whereas Rebecca decorated her office for each and every season and welcomed every visitor to her doorway with so much charm, they often stayed to swap stories. And whereas through greatest celebrations and deepest losses, Rebecca provided steadfast service to the public. Now, therefore, be it resolved that SIO Township residents, visitors, businesses, and the Board of Trustees thank Rebecca Maude for her service to SIO Township and wish her the very best in her new position.
Support.
All right, resolution offered by Flintoff, support by Yapo. We'll do a roll call vote. Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yeah.
Ryzer?
Yes.
Yapo?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Brant?
Yes.
Resolution adopted 6-0. And we'll prepare this and present it to Rebecca. Thank you.
Thank you for preparing this, sure.
Next up is N5, Authorization of Funds for Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office Under Current Contract. As mentioned in the background here, and Rob, I think there's a copy there. And if there's not, would you mind making sure there's one? This came up because after the board unanimously... Let me just back up. In the past, on occasion, any board member, if they felt the need, would reach out to a deputy to be present here. It was never a controversy. It was never a problem. Everyone, each person's sense of personal safety was respected. Certainly with the increasing political violence in the U.S., on September 30th, the board unanimously voted to have a deputy sheriff present at each of its board meetings. At the time, Lieutenant Kratzenberg shared that it would be able, we'd be able, they'd be able to provide that support as part of their regular services to the township. And this is, in fact, something that they can provide under our current contract. Subsequent to that, I know the supervisor and some residents raised concerns about cost. Township Attorney Mariah Fink reached out to the sheriff's office. I know Ryan had also reached out to the sheriff's office. And the bottom line is, the sheriff will be charging their contracted overtime rate of $84 an hour. As you probably know, we pay for eight PSUs. We contract for eight PSUs, about five are ever filled. So, much of our services are provided, whether it's inside this building or on the freeway or anywhere, by our deputies who are paid through contract overtime. So, the overtime rate is within the contract. In terms of coverage, at the highest end, you know, estimating the longest meetings, I'm estimating $5,880 for the remainder of the fiscal year. I've attached the budget to actuals. It shows you that we are at, for the entire sheriff's, you know, budget, we're at just over a third. We're halfway through the year, and we're at about 33% of our budgeted funding. So, there's ample funding in our budget, ample funding in the contract. But I promise, because questions had been raised about, is this going to cost money? So, this would cost money. This would cost $5,880. So, I wanted to bring it back to the board for its consideration.
Thank you for providing this information.
You're welcome.
I appreciate you presenting this item and preparing it. And I think everyone has a right to feel safe. And I appreciate the sheriff for being able to provide the coverage. And I would support the model motion at this point.
And I would state, I'm glad we took action to address the political climate. And I appreciate the clerk for bringing this detail to show that we are under budget on sheriff. We can certainly afford this. It's not just safety for the board, it's safety for the residents. And I appreciate these efforts. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Just Ryan's already supported it. I'll make them up.
Okay.
No one could do that.
You got bumped, Ryan. So, Reed, motion by Reed, support by Yapo. Kathy?
I was gonna say, at the SIO Township Fire Halloween Party this weekend, Alicia Dwyer was there. And several of us spoke with her at length about numerous issues, including this and active shooter response training and how to deal with ICE training. So, it was an interesting discussion, but have something more to talk about on the issues later.
So, does anyone on this board have concerns about using $5,880 for this purpose?
No.
Okay. So, there's a motion by Reed, support by Yapo, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it. Thank you. All right, next up is N2. Consideration of Purchase of Land or Lease of Real Property. I would offer a motion to move into closed session for the purpose of considering the purchase or lease of real property up to the time of an option to purchase or lease that real property is obtained as permitted by MCL 15.2681D.
I'll support that motion.
Unless there's any discussion, I'll call the roll. Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yeah.
Ryzer?
Yes.
Carrie, oh, excuse me, Yapo?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Brant?
Yes.
Motion adopted 6-0. We are now in closed... Welcome back to the meeting of the Board of Trustees. Is there a motion to return to open session?
No.
Motion by Reed, is there support?
Support.
Support by Yapo, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are back in open session at 9:18 PM. Do you want to mention?
Sure. I move to approve the expenditure of $175,000 for the fee simple purchase of application 2025-2, $10,000 for due diligence costs, and $5,000 for closing costs from...
Budgeted funds and funds.
Budgeted funds and Fund 233.
Support.
Okay, motion by Yapo, support by Reed, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Motion adopted. Okay, the last item on our agenda, pulled from consent, is actually K1, Payment of the Bills. I pulled it at the request of Utilities Director Brandon McNeil and our engineer Matt Parks, who have requested that we rush a payment to Paymart Industries for a payment they're recommending on the Liberty Road Water Main Phase 1 project. We still haven't closed that out, because there's still some work they keep finishing up on. So, OHM's still holding some of it back, but there are some, Paymart and their subs need to get paid. So, unless there are any questions, I'd make a motion to approve the proposed claims for payment of October 28th, amended to add the approval of payment to Paymart Enterprises in the amount of $79,122.25 from account 591000158 for Liberty Road Water Main Phase 1, and to receive the prior general check run report for October 15th and the prior DDA check run report for October 21st.
Support.
Okay, motion by Flintoff, support by Yapo, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion adopted. Thank you very much. Next up is public comment. This is the time for members of the public to speak to the Board of Trustees for up to five minutes on any matter. Rob, welcome.
Just thank you for providing the detail tonight on what the extra coverage is gonna cost. However, it didn't answer the question about the number of deputies that have on duty on a Tuesday night. Kathy, you said that you had conversations with Sheriff Dyer between you and Jess. Did you get any information about what our coverage is on Tuesday nights? We just have one deputy, and is that deputy the one that's assigned to the building? Or do we have a deputy assigned to the building and a deputy for coverage in the township?
It's, sorry, I'll answer it. No, it's my understanding that the deputy assigned to the building, which is why we're paying the overtime cost, is in addition to any other deputy that's in the township.
That's fantastic. And five grand out of 1.5 million is a drop in the bucket. I have no problem with that whatsoever. Thank you for answering that question, Mariah. Just at the beginning of the meeting, or the item, you said that having deputies present was... present was done in the past. That's true. But this is the first time we've asked for continuous uh coverage of having a deputy present at at each uh at each meeting. Um so I just wanted to make that clear that, yes, we've had coverage in the past for isolated meetings that were gonna be contentious, but now this is the first time we've had this request for continuous coverage. Um I will again repeat my caution to the board. Having a deputy present makes it appear you're afraid of residents. And I know you're not, but that's how it appears, and that automatically creates distance between you and residents. And it automatically creates a hesitation of people wanting to speak, especially nowadays in the era of ICE. Uh so I just caution you that that there are consequences to having a deputy present at every meeting. And it's not about safety. I'm talking about your interaction with residents. So I'm curious, have the rules changed? Uh for a long time, well, for four years, David, Ryan, and Kathleen and I were on this side of the table. And we had very direct um comments, or mostly for Supervisor Hathaway, and that was never an issue. Um and now that you three are on that side of the table, now you're, it seems that the rules have changed. And if I say something that you disagree with, or that makes you uncomfortable, you don't want me to address you individually, you want me to address the board. Uh thankfully, that is not how the First Amendment works. I will continue to address you individually and collectively as the board, as need to. But I just wanna note the irony, that for four years, I spoke directly to Supervisor Hathaway, and no one said a peep about uh directing my comments to the board. And now that the the new board is in place, now there's comments about directing my comments to the board collectively and not individually. The irony of that is interesting. Uh Kathleen, at the beginning of the meeting, your response, you said you were disappointed in my um uh, well, once again, you took my comments out of context. I didn't say anything about not wanting this board to be safe. I asked about how much it was gonna cost. I asked for that information to be reported to residents. I pointed out that information um was not shared two weeks ago. Lastly, I disagreed with Jess's characterizations of my public comments last week as rankings, safety for some over others. You and I may not have had conversations about safety, but Jess and I have had a conversation about safety. And she knows how much I'm concerned. I've made suggestions, and she knows that um that that is a um a common issue between us. So um lastly, uh Christie, uh do we have any word on HVAC grants? We're 1.7, 1.57 million for the HVAC system. Uh we're two years into this now, and grants were a big part of that. Do we have any information about whether grants are are on the way or not?
I'll have to get get back to you.
Okay.
And I I would also suggest the board hold their answers for board response, if we could. Thank you. Keep going.
If we respond to that, I would really appreciate that. Um and that's a good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Any comments on Zoom? Christie, anybody with their Zoom here?
Also, Jess, thank you for doing me a copy of your your uh agenda. I appreciate that.
Of course, of course.
Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak a public comment? Please raise your Zoom cam. There are no hands raised.
Okay, board member response? Kathy?
I have a couple of comments. Um I think we all need to consider that the political environment right now in our country is very different from what it has been in the past. Um currently here, we are regularly seeing excessive expressions of emotion and vitriol. Um there are numerous reasons for having a deputy present. The perception of board members about the situation weighs in heavily. And so even though to to others, it might not appear that there is a reason to have a deputy present, to us, or a majority of the board, it does appear that way. And I also want to say, in the past, um when I was on the board between 2004 and 2008, we had requested that a deputy be present for numerous sequential meetings go- going on for months, when there was an incident involving residents who were unhappy, and they left a dead cow in the parking lot after one of our meetings. And so I'm just gonna say, the requests for having a deputy present might vary with the situation and vary with the board members, but there's always been a reason to do it. That's it.
And uh David, Ryan, Kathleen?
Rob, I I understand your your comment about how having a sheriff deputy in the room might put a damper on some folks' thoughts about making comments. I I absolutely uh see where you're coming from. But by the same token, I think the people in that church and the people in that school and the people in that shopping mall never thought that someone was gonna come in with a rifle and open fire, especially if some random guy that that didn't know any of those people, they just walked in and started firing. So that's why that sheriff deputy is here, not to silence. And so I'm wondering if um Jessica, maybe uh between you and Jillian, maybe you can figure out, at the beginning of each meeting, we can point out the fact that he is, that the sheriff, he or she, is here for as much their safety as ours. Um so as not to 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 try and dis-
Sure.
-spel the the
Yeah, ab- absolutely. I mean, I've heard that concern from Rob. I've not heard it from anyone else. I'm not discounting Rob's concern. But but I do think it's good to explain why. It's just for everyone's safety and, you know, certainly not meant to stifle anyone. In this era of ICE, I think most of us look at the Washtenaw County Sheriff um much more as the good guy these days.
Right.
Right.
So, couple of things. Uh one on the HVAC uh rebates. Uh I I have been uh uh Plank Fisher Chair Colberston put me in touch with the Michigan Technical Assistance Center. Uh and Raymond, as well as a contractor from the state of Michigan, uh have worked with uh myself, as well as uh the project team to get information on the system uh in a positive development. The IRS, last week, even though the federal government shut down, somehow established me access, and I now have access to submit the grant. So that's wonderful. Uh not sure how the heck that took six months, but we got it done. Um so so that's definitely there. We have received the Eagle Grant uh that we were gonna get for this project. I I saw the the deposit occur. Um I know that our project manager might still be working on finishing a couple pieces of paperwork surrounding it, but we received the funds nonetheless. Um something about the
Six hundred dollars.
Uh it was $100,000. Yep. Um something that I saw the other day, you know, sort of speaks to the situations for the t- the tone and the tenor of what's going on in the country. I saw a video of Senator McCain and, at the time, I think it was Senator Obama, uh engaged in a debate. And a individual in the crowd stood up and said a racist comment about President, then-President-to-be Obama. And Senator McCain stood up and said, no, ma'am, he's a family man. You know, he and I have fundamental differences on on a number of issues, but that that's not okay. Um I think we've lost out in this country. It's rather sad. Thank you.
Kathy?
Yeah, um Ryan, I I just want to confirm, we s- we still are eligible for the federal rebates.
Correct.
Yeah.
Uh totaling roughly $600,000, which was one of the bases for our decision. So um I believe we decided wisely. That was not revoked. And I also want to give a shout out to Christie, who's been monitoring this process. Um there's deadlines for when that work had to occur and payments. Um she saved us, I believe, $15,000 by filing or paying by the end of June. That was huge. She caught that in the witching hour.
Mm-hmm.
And I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank Christie, um who's been doing a fantastic job across the board. And I know sometimes people groan about the length of our agenda, but I just want to say how proud I am of us getting so much done and how many of the items are on consent. So that's that's a sign of the prep work. So thank you, everybody, for that.
Wonderful.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, one more. May I?
Oh, I'm I'm sorry. One moment, there's a comment by uh David. No, no, is it?
Look, Kathy, that's all.
I was gonna thank Jessica for efficiently facilitating the meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Welcome. Is there a motion? Um I'm sorry, public comment is over, but after the meeting, I'd be happy to hang out and hear it, hear, hear the request. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Support. Motion by Yeaple, support by Noel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned at 9:31. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.